Okay, it being, I think, 7:04, bring the five committees, all committees, meeting together. Thank you all for being here. I'm Ann Harrison. I'm the piece of furniture that heads the school committee, the select board in Manchester. This is Ruth Perrin, who is the chair of the, right, Board of Selectmen in Essex. Most of you have been to meetings before, and we're going to use some of the usual rules. No side conversations. If you want to speak, speak to one of the chairs. We're going to start with having, by having Pam explain something about the state of the school and the school budget. We're doing this early because in the past, the boards have come into the school budget fairly late, and the school hasn't known exactly where their target should be. We want everybody to at least have an opportunity to speak and hear what everybody else is thinking at this point. We're not going to solve all of the problems tonight, but we are going to lay a floor on which the school budget can be built, at least, I hope so. After Pam, we're going to ask the two town administrators to give a short explanation of the state of the two towns financially and what their capabilities are. Then Ruth and I are going to say something about the opinions and attitude of the two Boards of Selectmen, select boards. And then the two finance committees will give their presentations. Ruth has said that she didn't, their Board of Selectmen didn't have a chance to meet, so she can only give a fairly short overview. And I have agreed, we have agreed, that she could give her time to the Essex Finance Committee, which has a lot to say. So she is yielding her time to bed.
Ann?
Yes, the school--
Don't we need to call the Boards--
We will do that. We're just going to do the overview, then we'll call all the Boards to order before anyone speaks.
Yeah.
We're in the same room. It seems like people--
Okay, fine. If you would like to call your Boards to order, why don't we start with you, Sarah?
I called the Interchange Finance Committee to order, oh, about 7:04. I have with me Peter Twine, Dean Hahn, and Mike Brad and Neil--
Thank you. And Ben?
Yep, I'll call the Essex Finance Committee to order at 7:07. And there's me, Jody Harris, Josh Franklin, Nina McKinnon, Christopher Wolf. So we have a quorum.
Thank you. And the school committee?
Teresa Whitman calls to order the school committee at 7:08. We have Kate Clutchenquist, Teresa Whitman, Chris Reed, John Benares, Anna Lynn Mitchell, Erica Spencer.
And I call the Manchester Select Board to order. We have Kathy Bellata, Becky Jakes, Brian Solacey, and John Round, and me, Ann Harrison.
I call the Essex Board of Selectmen to order this evening to myself, Ruth Perrin, and Alva Ingaharu.
I guess the next thing is for Pam.
Sure. I think you left. Thanks, everyone, for coming in tonight. I can't speak with the Board, but for myself, I'd be very happy to hear and get some guidance before we start out on our budgeting process this year. I think it'll be very helpful in how we take our initial steps. We know very little at this time, except for what our past trends have been. So we'll start with a basic assumption that our 10-year trends will likely hold for the upcoming year. Our 10-year spending growth, budgeted spending growth trend is at 3.4%. That's inclusive of an override year, which was a designed 6% increase in budgetary growth, expenditure growth. Exclusive of that year, our annual budget growth is 3.18%, so somewhere between 3.4 and 3.18, with some design large years. That's translated into a 10-year average of 3.28% assessment growth, or 2.8% without the override year included. These numbers have been extremely stable by design. Our goal is to be reliable as a budgeting partner, and we've been working toward and not to exceed 3.5% assessment for the past 12 years. In the years that we have pursued an override, it was by design of members or representatives of the Boards that are in this room, multi-year discussions, and then a team effort to get the overrides passed in both towns. What we can assume this year is that unless we have drastic change in one of our three key variables, which would be health care, personnel, salary costs, and out-of-district placements and tuition, we can assume that we will, again, find ourselves somewhere between 3% and 3.5% growth, translated into, and managed to maintain, 3.5% ceiling on assessment. So we start the year knowing that our budget, as tightly as it's managed and as conservatively as we try to plan, will likely exceed the available resources of one or both of our member towns. So that's what we're seeking guidance on. We spend a lot of time every year talking about solutions to the structural problem. My hope tonight is that we focus on the structural problem. There's plenty of time for solutions discussions, and that's what we'll do with the Board as we go through the year. What should we do? What can we reorganize? How can we do things differently to remain, to maintain our commitments to the communities? I think what's become evident in the past couple of years is that our base assumption of a 3.5% ceiling on assessment isn't holding, and that either has to be reaffirmed or reassessed and revised, and then we will set out on our work, as we always have, which is to deliver a budget within those constraints. So that is where we are tonight with a simple footnote, that at this point, we have, I will stamp preliminary, not official, it won't be our official headcount until the end of October, a relatively stable enrollment picture for next year, with a slight variation that showed 0.7% up for Manchester, 0.7% down for Essex. So I'm not sure that it moves the needle all that much on these calculations, but it's, there is a reference point. So it looks like we're starting off the year in the same position we did last year.
Yes. Everybody, I'm Brendan Zubricki. I'm the Essex Town Administrator. Just briefly, I'm going to go back and look at a couple of things that Essex benefited from in the past, and we've brought ourselves to this point, which is a difficult place to be. In the past, we were successful, fortunately, in some legal proceedings with respect to the rental of Conomel Point. Prior to those legal proceedings, the town was making about $110,000 off of the lease of the properties for the entirety of Conomel Point. After the legal proceedings, the town sold 2/3 of the property, which has been used in various capital projects. And we're up to $650,000, so we went more than sixfold as a result of the litigation. So back when that occurred, which was in 2017, that was quite a benefit. Around 2013, we moved into the Regional Dispatch Center, and that brought to the town probably $300,000, especially today, now Manchester's in there as well, where the State 911 Department is actually picking up the entire cost of that. So we saved money there. And we also had excess tax levy capacity that we had accrued over time. The last time that there was a major correction sought by the district at the time, I believe Manchester had to go for an override, and Essex was able to actually absorb that because we were coming fairly fresh off of those sources that I just told you about. Between then and now, with the enrollment trend that has not been favoring Essex, we've moved to a place where we've been steadily using up any of that capacity, to the point where we get to this fiscal year that we're in right now, and with the work that the school committee did to bring the budget down, and with the levy capacity that we had accrued between the last time there was a major correction and this fiscal year, we were able to meet the reduced budget. So where does that put us? It puts us at 100% tax levy, so there's no additional tax levy capacity going into FY '25. We're going to make an assumption that we're going to get a small amount of new growth. But even with that, and I don't want to steal Ben's thunder, even with that, we're still behind by about $60,000, and that's if the school district came in at 2.5% overall, which is about 4% to Essex. If that doesn't happen, then it's more negative. If there are things within the town budget that need to be absorbed, for example, this year, we're probably going to be putting a downtown maintenance budget into our line item budget, whereas it had been funded in the past for a few cycles with just capital money. But we know that we want to do that on an ongoing basis. It's $20,000, okay? So 60 becomes 80. School comes in, not at 2.5, it goes up again. Health insurance comes in higher than we expected, it goes up again. So I'm not trying to be bleak about this, but we're already in a position where it's going to be very difficult to handle if the school district does come in at 3.5 overall. That's a much higher percentage. Again, 2.5 is 4 to Essex, 3.5 is, I don't know, almost 6? Depends. Five something. You get the picture, right? That's it. Short and sweet. That's where we are.
Greg?
Good evening, everybody. I'm Greg Biderspill, the Town Administrator in Manchester. So I guess my main message is Manchester sitting today is relatively strong financially, but we have some major, major headwinds coming our way, primarily in the form of needing to reinvest in facilities and other infrastructure. So the, and that's being compounded by exacerbated, compounded by climate issues. Obviously, we're both coastal communities, and we have a lot of, a lot of balance basing that in terms of what sort of impacts the polarized bigger storms may well have on us. So those are the, I would have summed it up in a sentence, that's where we are at. So we've been on a good trajectory, AAA bond rating, receiving awards for annual comprehensive audits, et cetera. And so that, things have been in pretty good shape, some good policies in place, reserve funds that are targeted. It used to be 10%, we're lowering that down to 8% for total reserves. Don't use those reserves for operating, use them for either emergency fund, emergencies that come up, or for one-time capital expenses. But don't use them for operating. And that digs a hole that is very difficult to get out of. I think those policies have served the town very well. We've been retiring our town debt. We have very little town debt left. The goal is to never have more than 10% of expenses dedicated towards debt. We've been able to build up some excess levy capacity in the last few years. When COVID hit, we sort of put on the brakes in terms of spending. We had a 0% increase for town expenditures that year. Because of the shift in enrollment, shifting more the burden of the increase to Essex, we've been able to obviously have a smaller increase on our share towards the district. So those two efforts combined, excuse me, have allowed us to build up some excess levy But then we get to the need for the facilities and the capital challenges we have. So we're putting the finishing touches on a new facility plan. That plan will call for in the vicinity of $100 million worth of expenditures in the next 10, 10 to 15 years. We won't be able to afford $100 million worth of improvements over the next 10 to 15 years. Every million that we borrow, you can figure, for easy calculation, it's about $100,000 annual expenses. So borrowing 25 million, you're in the 2.5 to $3 million range of annual expense. That would be an 8% to 10% tax increase just for that 25 million. So when I say that 100 million, that did not include the possibility of an Essex elementary school, which is certainly in the pipeline as well. So I share those numbers because that's where the big challenge lies. How are we going to make the hard choices going forward in paying for those kind of facility needs that we have? There are some positive notes on the horizon. It's not all, it's not all going. We anticipate a healthy increase in tax revenue with the cell signaling project, a new biotech facility that we hope to see constructed in the next three, four years across 128. That'll be the largest commercial development that the town has seen, and that should bode well. We're on track to retire our OPEZ and pension liabilities by the early '30s. So those two developments alone, the CST project, and no longer having to put money into those liabilities, should free up in the range of $3 million that could be put towards probably some of these capital expenses. So covers about a quarter of what is being projected for those facilities. So if we drill down to a projection for '25, you know, where things stand. So a 2.5% increase for Manchester in terms of taxes raises about $720,000 in new revenue. On top of that, we typically see in the range of $200,000 of new tax money from new growth. And then other miscellaneous revenues, maybe a slight uptick, very slight, in state aid. We don't get very much, so even a 3% increase in state aid doesn't amount to more than a few thousand dollars. An uptick in our locker receipts, car excise taxes, fees from permitting, et cetera. So we, round figures, we typically have about $1 million of new tax money to spend. School district at a 3.5 appropriation assessment towards Manchester takes a little over half of that, $560,000. And then the remaining of that million is then spent towards typically salary increases, a small increase in expenses, operating expenses. Health insurance and pension continue to climb at a pretty, well, they're actually climbing at a faster clip than they had recently. We had a good run with health insurance, but I think those days are, have come to an end. In the next few years, we anticipate we're being closer to the double-digit inflation. So at 3.5 or less in terms of district growth for us is manageable. Anytime we go higher than 3.5, we feel that pain. We have to cut other areas, don't increase allocations to other town operations to sort of make that work. But we're fortunate that the 3.5 can work in terms of, in terms of revenues. So I think, you know, looking forward to the bottom line for me, I think that we need to do sort of a all options on the table approach. We need to, long-term, look at more shared services. I know that both Essex and Manchester have pursued some, and we will continue to do so. We'll need to continue to be aggressive with trying to go after grant funds. We've been pretty successful with that. I think Essex has had some good luck with that as well. We need to look at growing our tax base. The CST project is the first, really, in a long time, that we've seen any appreciable growth in our tax base. And we'll need to approve overrides, we'll need to approve debt exclusions. There's no way around that reality, I don't believe. And we'll also need a large dose of patience, because we're not going to be able to do everything that we're going to want to do. And that's true across the board. But I do think the strong partnership that Essex and Manchester has had certainly predates me, I think is one well worth preserving, and I'm very hopeful that that'll remain a significant part of the strategy going forward. So I did put this in a handout, if people are interested. In case you didn't want to memorize all those numbers, I'm happy to pass those around.
Thank you, Greg. If you have them--
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, that's the financial outlook. The discussion will start with each Board describing their view on how to deal with the problems of developing a school budget at 3.5, at whatever, and what the school budget should be, and what kind of schools we expect to have. This, I'm going to say, ask that we just hold questions. If you have a question on anything, write it down, and we will, we will take questions at the end. And tonight, we are not taking questions from the, from anyone who is not on one of these Boards. Thank you for attending. I hope you learned something, and I hope it's of value. Now we begin with the Board Chair reports, starting with the Essex Board of Selectmen.
Thank you, Ann. So I want to take a moment just to thank everybody from all Boards for being here this evening. I know it's not easy to get five Boards together in the same room to meet, and I also want to thank everybody for all of the volunteer hours that we collectively put in. It's a lot of time, and I appreciate it, and I'm sure everybody here appreciates it. So after having said that, I'm at a mini disadvantage in the sense that the Collaboration Group met on September 12th to discuss this evening's agenda, what the format would be, and the Essex Board of Selectmen met on September 11th. So we've not had a meeting since the agenda was set. So what I'm going to do is, we did invite our town accountant to our meeting on the 11th to give us just kind of a little bit of an overview on where we would be with the school budget for fiscal '25. So I'm going to just recap that, which is just a little blurb that I prepared. It's literally two sentences. So just very brief, and then I'm going to, like I said, share my time with the Essex Finance Committee, who did have an opportunity to meet, and his summary's a little bit bigger than mine. So we invited Town Accountant Jeff Sullard to join the Board, and he presented the analysis of the town's potential capacity to fund the fiscal year 2025 Manchester Essex School District budget. Based on the analysis, even if the district seeks an overall increase of 2.5%, which is about 4% for Essex, the town will not have enough capacity in its tax levy to afford the increase. The Selectmen were in agreement with the assessment, and that was, that's pretty much my only update, because, like I said, the Board has not collectively met to have a true vote for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Ben, with the Essex Finance Committee?
Sure. Thank you. Well, first of all, I appreciate everyone being here. I think this, I mean, this is a real challenge that we face because of the structural issues, and it seems like we go over them every year. And there's not an easy solution, because if there was, we would have found it. In fact, I plugged it into AI because I was curious. I wanted to make sure that I didn't miss anything, so I plugged a question into ChatGPT saying, well, why is the district budget discussion such a challenge every year for the town of Essex, Massachusetts? And interestingly, it spit out a lot of minutia that was summarized, that didn't make a lot of sense, although the first bullet point said fluctuating enrollment. And I thought, well, okay, that actually I can get behind. I also put it into Bard, which is the Google AI, and basically, it just said, it's an enormously complex issue. So I did feel validated when I saw that. I'm like, okay, well, if there was a, you know, magic wand that we could wave, then, you know, obviously, it's not there. Anyway, we did meet on Wednesday, the 13th, and we had about an hour-long discussion, and later on, I think we have, you know, opportunity for individual comments, so people can weigh in if I mischaracterize everything. But we had a lot of discussion about a lot of issues. And, you know, what we ended up doing was identifying what we viewed as best practices and core tenets around the district budget, and then general sentiment on considerations such as an override, the use of town reserves, and also the specter of a super, you know, joint town meeting, if things don't go well over the coming years. So we kind of covered the waterfront. This discussion, bless you, was referred to as the Groundhog Day part of the agenda because we've gone through these conversations literally, literally every year for the last five years. So it's probably easy to start with the core tenets. Everyone on the Finance Committee strongly values education and the importance of having a strong public school system. This is a key asset. There's also strong agreement on the importance of transparency, and there were specific ideas around how we could achieve greater transparency, and I'll speak to that in a moment. There was also acknowledgement that the override campaign last spring was extremely divisive for the town. There seems to be little appetite to try for another override again this year, but I'll speak to that point again later. I do think it's helpful to provide some context for everyone here tonight, whether you're here in person, or live-stream participating, or you watch the recording. Over the last five years, through the current fiscal '24 that we're in, the district assessment to both towns has averaged 2.88%, and that is, that is the combination of the two towns. Over this same period, the Essex assessment growth has averaged 3.78% due to apportionment, in contrast to Manchester's average of 2.37. So the annual financial burden to Essex has been 1.41% higher. This is the largest line item on our budget, and the growth has been far beyond the Prop 2.5 limit. For this current fiscal year, the spread was 3.93% for Essex and 0.85% for Manchester. So that's a, that's a spread of 3.08%, which is actually illustrated up on there. And I say this just because I think it's helpful to ground everyone just in terms of the data, the facts. And, you know, I know people say, well, it cycles back and forth, and, you know, Manchester has gone through this before, and that is certainly true. But it's nowhere near the magnitude of the spread that we're at today. So we're in uncharted territory, and, you know, again, I think this is just a grounding data point that's important. The reason for the swing in the apportionment over to Essex is not a mystery. 50% of the apportionment is determined by relative enrollment between the two towns. Since the COVID academic year of 2021, up to the current preliminary enrollment data for this fall, the '23-'24 year, Manchester has seen a decline of 89 students. Essex has seen a decline of seven students. There was certainly a spike in withdrawals for both towns during the 2021 COVID year, but most of these Essex drops returned the next academic year. The recovery in students didn't happen in Manchester, and I'll come back to this in a moment, but I also think that's important. And by the way, there's a chart up here that kind of shows the, I want to stress, this is enrollment from each town, so it doesn't factor in school choice, but these ratios are important just in terms of the way that it's calculated. So two important grounding points, the apportionment and the enrollment. We began our meeting last week with an update on Essex's financial condition, and that was from Jeff Sullard, our town accountant. I mean, Brendan pretty much stated the same thing that he had stated to us, and that is that we used all of our excess capacity last year to fund, it wasn't even the override, but basically what we could without having the override, and that allowed us to pay for a 3.93% increase in the Essex portion of the assessment. So even that was still beyond the Prop 2.5 limit, even after the failed override. The result-- The result of this is that if you assume 2% expense growth at the town level, the maximum we could absorb for fiscal '25 is 2.5% growth in the overall assessment. So again, 2.5 is still somewhere between 3.75% and 4% for the town. If you use the 3.5% sort of target number in terms of overall assessment, we're, you know, at 4.75% to 5% depending upon, you know, the detailed or the final numbers. So we're sort of up against the corner, again, just before we even start budget season yet. So it's just, I think it's important to put this out into the open, that the, if we made assumptions for growth, you know, which we don't usually do, but if we account for an assumption around growth, then we could probably, we could make two and a half percent assessment work, but it's still, you know, we're up against the box on capacity. It would be, according to Jeff, about 60K, as Brendan had stated, in terms of, we'd have to figure that out somehow, some way. So that is challenging. The other challenge that we have is capital outlay this year, which, you know, obviously we have the 400K for the turf fields. We also have a new ladder truck, which needs to be purchased, and then we have the regular OPEB and the usual outlay. So we don't have a lot of flexibility around free cash use, was sort of the other kind of grounding point here. There was very, just in terms of our discussion, there was a very strong consensus in support of opening the regional agreement, specifically to address the apportionment formula. There's a sense that the disparity in relative wealth between the two towns is not fully reflected in the current formula dictating the apportionment. And I don't know if this hard data to fully support this, but there's a belief that the recent drop in enrollment from Manchester was a shift to private school during COVID due to families disagreeing with remote learning. And I think there's been some exit interviewing on that, but I don't have hard data, but that's, that was, you know, the premise. So in summary, the heavy weighting of enrollment at 50% of the formula and the lighter weighting of relative property values, or EQV, at 25% creates a structural issue that we believe will challenge the viability of the district. Recognizing that any campaign to address apportionment is likely to be divisive, particularly for Manchester residents, a campaign to modify the regional agreement absolutely couldn't happen on top of an override effort, in the view of the committee, that the combination would be extraordinarily difficult. On the issue of an override, a major challenge that made the campaign so difficult comes back to relative wealth. Oh, wait, did I already say that? No, relative wealth. I know that this is true for Manchester as well, but we have a growing population that must stay within their homes, given the lesser ability for mobility, you know, the combination of rising home values and rising interest rates specifically. So it's difficult to downsize, given the lack of liquidity in the real estate market and the high rates. As a result, people stay in their homes longer, even if it's more home than they actually need. Many in this population segment are often on fixed income and particularly sensitive to property tax increases. And again, this is not an Essex-only issue, I just want to be clear, but the financially-constrained segment of residents was a loud voice, certainly during the override, you know, season during the spring. I think the home mobility issue is true everywhere, and it's one of the reasons that there's a higher number of failed overrides across the state in the course of the last two years. So I think, I think it's harder, I guess is what I'm saying. It's harder to proceed on an override campaign because of externalities and people's circumstances. There was also agreement that we should make every effort possible to avoid a supertown meeting. Regardless of the outcome, one community loses its sovereignty, and further, it would threaten the wonderful partnership between our two communities. I also want to mention some of the tenets we discussed with specific recommendations. Transparency has been a hot button, and our committee would like to see continued movement to reporting actuals during the course of the year. I know that's happening two or three times a year. It's helpful. And I know progress was made last year in providing this data. We'd like to see an annual report delivered in October, as is stipulated in the regional agreement, or if this is not viable, then let's make this part of the regional agreement discussion. I had noted that Hamilton Wenham delivered a certified end-of-year report for fiscal '22 on November 23rd. Of particular interest to the committee is seeing actuals versus budgeted financials for the prior fiscal year-end and an accounting of actual reserve balances and use of reserve funds. Also, on the issue of transparency, we discussed liaison roles to town departments. We agreed that since major budget items are concentrated on just a few areas, we will double up and have two committee members tag team on town departments, and this should also include the district. We're proposing to send both the district liaison and the finance committee chair to the collaboration meetings, and I think that was actually discussed in the school committee meeting, so hopefully there's some alignment there. And it just provides more flexibility in terms of attendance and also report outs in terms of what's discussed. I should also say there's still frustration over the lack of responsiveness and completeness in the class size data from last spring. The committee would like to see greater proactivity in addressing the requests and engagement on any underlying challenges that prevents full disclosure. Honestly, and this is my personal view, it did give red meat ammunition to those voices that oppose the override. It's interesting that the VOC override was approved and the district was not, because, I mean, in terms of budget impact, obviously, the VOC's much smaller, but I think there's some emotion in the system there that people are voting on. So I think that that should be acknowledged. We also hit on the issue of school choice. Our consensus was that school choice should not be viewed as a long-term solution to the broad enrollment decline. There's a general lack of support for school choice, given that the revenue opportunity is so limited and the responsibility becomes enduring over time. And that's pretty much it. I invite any of my fellow committee members to provide any additional context and clarify anything that I've mischaracterized, because one of those conversations, that was kind of all over the place, so I was trying to rein it in and provide some organization. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, I will give my report from the Manchester Select Board. We discussed the school district budget issues at our meeting last night. Everyone on the board agreed that education, the education provided by the regional district is a great asset to the whole community and not just the families with children at the schools. Compromising the quality of education to resolve the ongoing funding challenges would not be acceptable to Manchester's Select Board. If necessary, the board would support an override to Proposition Two and a Half if that were required to fulfill Manchester's share of the district budget. On the other hand, there is no appetite for looking into the apportionment formula. Members of the board asked, so what is meant by level services? More specifically, does the district work to improve its offerings, phasing out less effective programs, and imagining new ways to improve the outcome for all students? Members of the board want more than level services, if that means, if level services mean stagnation. We want continually excellent, a continually excellent school system, and believe that that is what the residents of Manchester want also. The Select Board had two specific suggestions for resolving the current challenges with the budget. The first was to get an outside perspective on the whole operation of the school. The district administration and school committee have looked at the budget and operations so many times that they may not see opportunities that would be visible to new eyes. More specifically, the suggestion is to hire a consultant with experience in dealing with budgets and operations of multi-town districts. The next was to look for savings on the non-instructional side of the budget. To date, the discussion has been about not replacing teachers who retire or reducing class offerings in non-core areas. Perhaps there are savings to be found in facilities or utilities or combining administrative positions. The non-instructional budget is nearly half of the total district budget. It should be examined for savings as closely as the instructional side. Finally, the Select Board had comments about the relationship between the two towns. The comments varied. One question was, what can we do to help our partners in Essex? Another suggested that Essex should look at its decision-making specifically about its willingness to support capital projects but not operational costs. In terms of the six tools that have been identified for resolving the dilemma of the district's natural growth rate of 3.5% and the town's growth restriction at 2.5%, here are the Manchester Select Board positions. School district cuts, yes, but not if they impact the excellence of the education. Town cuts or town budget restructuring, yes, but in particular, we look to Essex. Use of reserves, town and school. Essex has no reserves. Manchester has no need to use its reserves at the moment, and the school reserves are a very short-term fix. Overrides, yes, to maintain the excellent quality of the education. Change to the apportionment, no interest. A supertown meeting, yes, if that's what's necessary to preserve the excellence of the school system. And I, we have a couple more people to talk, and then I encourage my board to correct any of my misstatements. The, now, I would like to hear from the Manchester Finance Committee.
Thank you. Manchester Finance Committee met on Wednesday and discussed the agenda, and we came to a number of conclusions. We expect the school district to increase fees and find efficiencies to control the budget, particularly in the non-instructional portion, and to present a budget that strives to maintain the current quality of the educational program, including offering diverse courses to enable each student to reach their full potential. Failing to do so will result in declining revenue, an increased per-student cost, and will erode our tax base if families feel they need to send their children to private schools and no longer wish to pay the extremely high housing costs to live in Manchester. The discussion of district expenses, both operating and capital, should be considered together. While maintaining and updating the infrastructure of the schools cannot be ignored, it is difficult for us to reconcile a major spend on infrastructure without an agreement that there is a path forward on maintaining the current quality of the educational program. Over the past 10 years, to afford the district apportionment, we have increased nonprofit property tax fee revenue, pursued grants, and limited annual increases in the town's operating budget, particularly during COVID, when we did not increase to the levy limit to give the taxpayers some relief. We are facing over $100 million in major capital projects, as Greg mentioned, during the next 10 years or so, which will impact our tax rate. We have accumulated excess reserves and have been allocating them to fund capital projects and OPEB contributions. However, we have a policy to not use reserves to fund the town operating budget or school district apportionment. We will support overrides to maintain the existing quality of the educational program provided to the town, which is extremely important in attracting new families to town to maintain our tax base. We do not support adjusting the apportionment formula or freezing the apportionment percentage for a specified time period. To help control the apportionment volatility, the current formula is based on a three-year average of enrollments, equalized property evaluations, and population. Based on the fiscal year '24 operating budget apportionments and the October 2022 enrollment, Manchester is paying $23,595 per student, while Essex is paying $19,060 per student. The per-student cost in Manchester has increased $5,759 since fiscal year 2020, a 32% increase. Between 2020 and 2022, Manchester's enrollment declined by 81 students, which was 11% of our students, while Essex's enrollment increased by 13 students, or 3% of their enrollment. Prior to 2020, when the Manchester enrollment dropped significantly, we had annual increases of 3.3% to 4.92%. We supported an override to help fund the 9.29% increase in fiscal year 2016. Increases for fiscal years '20 through '23 ranged from 2.05% to 2.89%, and fiscal year '24 was abnormally low at the 0.84%. Since fiscal year '21, the total district budget apportioned to Manchester has represented between 51% and 54% of the total town budget excluding capital expenditures. Since Manchester is currently paying $4,500 more per student than Essex, we do not feel a change in the apportionment formula to decrease the cost to Essex makes financial sense to Manchester. A substantial portion of the cost of the educational program is based on the number of students, so it is appropriate for enrollment to be a primary portion of the formula. In addition, if demographics change, enrollments might increase more rapidly in Manchester due to the MBTA zoning 3A requirements, or if the SLV 136-unit affordable housing project is eventually built. Hopefully not too soon. This would increase district expenses and result in a larger apportionment to Manchester. As a last resort, we are prepared to support a supertown meeting, either if Essex does not support a district budget that strives to maintain the current quality of the educational program, or if the district budget presented is not sufficient to maintain the quality of the program, including diverse course offerings. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, the school committee.
All right. Thank you. So Pam already gave our financial outlook, so I'm going to use my time a little bit differently in considering what to share before all of you tonight. I wanted to take first, just take it back to basics just a tiny bit, and I went back to our policy manual. I'd like to share with you a reading from Section BA, our school committee operational goals. I think this speaks to, okay, well, if everyone here knows what the financial limitations are, what is the point of us being here? What do we need to do? What are we here for? The school committee is responsible to the people for whose benefit the school system has been established. The committee's current decisions will influence the course of education in our schools for years to come. The committee and each of its members must look to the future and to the needs of all people more than the average citizen finds necessary. This requires a comprehensive perspective and long-range planning in addition to attention to immediate problems. The school committee's primary responsibility is to establish those purposes, programs, and procedures that will best produce the educational achievement needed by our students. The committee is charged with accomplishing this while also being responsible for wise management of resources available to the school system. The committee must fulfill these responsibilities by functioning primarily as a legislative body to formulate and adopt policy, by selecting an executive officer to implement policy, and by evaluating the results. It must carry out its functions openly while seeking the comments of public, students, and staff in its decision-making processes. So that's what we do. That's what we're here for. We don't necessarily set the budget, but we, as a board, have to approve the budget that Pam and Abby will create, and we have to decide what outcomes, what priorities we are willing to support as a board. So tonight, we're here taking in all of you. So tonight, we're here taking in all of your info, and I don't need to point out the discrepancy. We have real clear discrepancies here. And we're just taking in the info about one aspect of our work. For us, that's the wise management and stewardship of the available resources for the district. So with that, what we will need to do is really decide together, based on the information we're receiving tonight and the process as we move forward, what level of education we believe our constituents want within both towns, and what outcomes we will support as a board. And we decided, or actually, I will say, I decided that we need to have that conversation after tonight's meeting in order to hear all of the input that's being shared about the constraints of the two towns. And we will need to decide what outcomes we will support if the resources don't match the expectations, as has been the case for the last two years. Then we will need to set goals to accomplish that. What we will do in this process, what our committee will be able to do and will commit to doing, is exploring all the ideas as far as they are in our purview to do so, and will answer to the community. So tonight, part of this is giving ideas about how to solve this. We will explore them. We'll talk about them. We'll see what could work, maybe what doesn't work, what couldn't work, what really does. Whatever it is, we'll explore them, and we'll work by majority of our body, just like you guys do with yours. What we won't do this year is get distracted by little things that turn into really big things. We have to stay on course as a committee here this year. We need to explore all the avenues, but then, once they've been explored, we will need to set that aside and move on to the next thing. What we need in order to approve a budget that we are then going to send to your towns, or what would be most helpful, would be an agreement for the fiscal year '25 of that target number. Pam has been asking for this. Pam and Avi have been asking for this for years, right? And we know that we have disagreement about it. We will have to explore, especially what I'm hearing is, look at the non-instructional costs, right? Look at things that aren't going to impact program, and I think that the Essex leaders would say the same. We will have to explore all of that, but in the end, they can build a budget around any number, target that we choose. And then it's up to us to discuss, okay, the cuts that go with that, what do we believe is in alignment with the strategic vision that both our communities engaged in over the last couple of years? What do we believe is going to offer the best educational outcomes for that? We'll take Pam's input. We'll take Avi's input. We'll take community input, which we learned a lot last spring. We know what the community does and does not want to see happen, for sure. And so what would be ideal is if we could, even if we can't solve the big picture one right away, but man, if we could come to an agreement between our two towns on a target for them, that would be a great place to start, so that then we can start addressing where those cuts need to come from. As a reminder, a budget that brings the total assessment number down to 2.5% for the next year is estimated right now at a $1.3 million deficit.
Gap.
Gap. Gap is the word that we're using for. So that was accurate as of the last time we met, for collaboration.
That's to Essex, 2.5 to Essex.
2.5 total assessment is what we have in our notes. We'll confirm that. That's a huge gap, and it does mean that there will be cuts with it. So even if it weren't 2.5, even if we were at 3.5, there's still a $600,000 to $700,000 gap. We're going to have to be tightening things up no matter what. We go through this every year. That's part of our process, right? And again, we'll take the input to look at non-instructional methods. But this doesn't change year over year. And so the issue of making 600,000 to 700,000, or 1.3 or somewhere in there this year, and again next year, and again the year after, is a really daunting task for us. And I know you all hear the complaints from taxpayers about the different aspects of this, for and against increasing taxes or decreasing the level of education in the district. Some questions that I have heard repeatedly, and I'm sharing these to get it out in the open and public meeting for everyone, not because, not by way of finger pointing or anything of the sort, but just so that everybody has the same information here. Questions that I and others on this committee have repeatedly received. Why wasn't this planned for? If it's happened before, why didn't, why didn't Town of Essex plan for it when it happened to Manchester? And when it happened to Manchester the previous time, why didn't they plan for it? If it's a cycle, why hasn't this planned for? What is the town doing to increase revenue? What are they doing? Is it just, is it just, well, we're out of options now, but what are they doing to actually increase? That's a question that we get a lot. What is, you know, if we're going to be talking about changing the apportionment, well, what's their skin in the game? And to Ben's point about, you know, override and apportionment change at the same time, the way I hear it from community members is a little bit different, that if Essex were more willing to pass an override, Manchester might be a little bit more willing to consider something different, not necessarily the apportionment shift, but something else, that there needs to be balance of skin in the game on this, along with cuts and tightening things up at the district level. What I'm not hearing from anyone, and I would offer at this table even so far, I'm not hearing, we want fewer options for our students. I'm not hearing, we want to cut teachers and have bigger minimum class sizes. I'm not hearing that. I'm not hearing, we need to dissolve the district. Very much. We're not hearing that. In the height of the moment, last spring, things got a little bit crazy, but generally speaking, what we're hearing is, we want a high-quality education. Help us understand why it's on the school to keep cutting, cutting, cutting instead of looking the other way. So those are the questions we get. They're not ours to answer necessarily, and you know that. So I would just want to thank you for your willingness to engage. I believe this is a positive road. I think getting us all in a room right now and hearing each other's perspectives is a very positive first step. And I'm also really clear, I just want to leave, finish by being very clear with our board, that we are here to listen tonight. Everyone is going to have a chance to give their individual message and put their, put their voice out there and their thoughts out into the public record. But we are here to listen and hear the different perspectives, because the voice of the majority does not always reflect the thoughts of the individual, and we really do want to understand where each person is coming from as it contributes to the voice of the whole. So with that, thank you very much.
Thank you, Teresa. I think I'd like to offer the superintendent a chance to respond first, if there is anything you would like to respond to.
The only thing I would like to do is ask clarifying question and then offer some corresponding information, because I wrote it down when Brendan was speaking. The 2.5 gets confused whether it's a 2.5 assessment or 2.5 to the Town of Essex, which changes what potential gap could be. So when we're speaking about 2.5 and you're doing your calculations, are you assuming 2.5 assessment then run through apportionment, or are you assuming?
All those comments were based on 2.5 overall, I think is the term I used.
Overall assessment.
Correct.
Okay. Just clarify. So if it were 2.5 overall assessment, if we don't get any downward movement in some of our key variables, it could be a potential $920,000 exercise of gap load.
The 1.3 million is based on prior conversations where we heard that if an override were not possible, and that knowing that there is no levy capacity, 2.5 would be the number to Essex, which would be a different type of total assessment, right? 2.5 to Essex.
My comments were at overall.
Correct. We've just migrated from today, so we're moving from 1.3, potentially off the model here, to about 920. These numbers obviously will be updated.
It's still true that 2.5 to Essex would work well. That's not, you know.
Not a good shot.
Okay. We're still over with 2.5 overall, okay? We're still in the hole.
Understood.
Yeah.
That's how you get the different numbers, and then the different numbers become confusing, and it feels like it's a moving target, and that's not the intent. It's just clarify the language.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Let me just echo that we're all talking, or Essex is suggesting that you might, you would be in better shape if the school budget to the towns grew by 2.5% rather than 3.5%.
Yes.
And you are not asking that the budget be cut to the point where the assessment to Essex was only up by 2.5%.
Last question for the Board of Select and for the Finance Committee.
Yes, but, okay. Bye. At this point, anyone who would like, yes, Ben.
I just want to clarify an omission. There was one paragraph that I didn't read, which was actually on the idea of a third-party review, and that, I realized that when you were talking, and there's a lot of support on the Finance Committee for a third-party review, specifically because we're not experts in a school district, and a regional district is complicated, and there's probably analogs across the state that we can look at in terms of, you know, where you have two towns. I mean, I don't think it's a huge number, but that could be instructional, just in terms of, we're sitting here struggling, and this has come up before likely in other districts, so we should, it would be helpful to get a third-party perspective.
Is there anyone who'd like to start?
I had a question about shared services between two towns. I had, you and I very good mentioned that during your presentation.
Because we're going to be trying to sort this out for notes for minutes, I'd like it if you gave your name.
Sure. Sorry about that. John Baneras, School Committee. So can I just ask, are there any existing shared service agreements between the two now, towns now, and how, you know, can we expand on those or maybe present new ones, perhaps?
Greg?
Well, there's two things that we do that...
Well, there's one giant thing we do, which is collaborative IT through the North Shore IT Collaborative. Town of Danvers is the, is the anchor town for that. We're both supportive of it, and in the end, we're getting better IT for less because of the economy of scale, so that's nice. We've both joined and support the Regional Dispatch Center, which in Essex was a huge savings, as I, as I pointed out. With respect to some other things that we've looked at, we have looked at how the councils on aging, on aging might be able to complement each other better in the future. For instance, Essex no longer operates its own bus, but Manchester does, and we happen to have a dedicated facility. I don't think Manchester does, but our facility isn't giant either, so we're talking around that. Certainly during COVID, we were happy to have our Board of Health Administrator help wherever necessary, not with just Manchester, but in any town that needed it, because she was very adept in that particular episode in history. I think we've explored fire and police. The problem with fire is, you need a set of trucks in the locale, and that becomes an issue. Police, I think both communities are expecting that they have a police force that they recognize and that's, you know, centralized in their community. There was a study done that we collaborated in through a grant, the Collins Center, it's up on Old Town websites. Take a look at that, because it went through the gamut of things that could be shared. And there's a nice appendix in there that showed what the two towns were already doing, at least at that point in time. Some of it was with each other, and some of it was with other communities, but we are really trying to maximize. I mean, look at Essex. It's a regional school district. It's a regional wastewater. It's a regional IT. It's regional dispatch. A lot of the major things, we've already, we had to. I mean, it was necessity. And the reason for that is, in Essex, you know, we have like departments of one. A lot of the departments is just one person and maybe a part-time staff, and in order to continue to run on that, we have to find a way to offload responsibilities and get either the same or better, in many cases, better, quality of whatever it is for less money. And that can happen, and that does happen. In Essex, our personnel increase for the year is usually around 2%, and our expenses are around 1%. And there was a comment from Manchester Finance Committee about looking to Essex to do cuts on our side. It's kind of hard to do when you're, when you're running at union contracts that are 2% and you're, you're, you're cutting to the bone to arrive in the ones with expenses. I bring that up because without regionalization, we wouldn't even, I don't know how it would be functioning, to be honest with you.
So there are a couple of other areas that have, up between Essex and Manchester, for example, Manchester shares an HR person with, not with Hamilton and Rockport. We share, we're about to share a conservation agent with Hamilton. We talked about that with Essex.
Right. We're looking to Gloucester to share.
Conservation agent.
We share a regional veteran agent, for example. So there are a number of examples of where it has worked, and always on the lookout for new opportunities.
Another thing to realize about Essex is, there's probably people wearing more hats per person in Essex than there are in Manchester, as far as the town staff is concerned. For instance, one, we actually, we actually talked about the shared HR. We were in on that discussion at the beginning. We didn't opt for it because it would cost us more, because I am the HR guy, and I already get paid, so it didn't make any sense. You have to understand that we don't have very much going in the economy of scale department. If you remember back a few years ago, Boston Globe did a piece on the cost of running a police department. Town of Essex was near the very top, and that's because if you stand up a police department and you have to have two people on every shift to deal with domestics, you have a fixed cost versus a town of 3,600 people, that in a town like Manchester, you might be able to get away with close to the same thing for a similar cost. And we're, we're kind of behind that, that curve on everything we do, because we have to stand up one of everything that every other town has to stand up, and it cuts against us, and that's one of the things that's making it difficult.
Andy, your name.
I'm the old Manchester Finance Committee. I was curious, just looking at the, you know, the enrollment numbers, whether you, Pam, or Avi have more of a qualitative sense of those numbers. I have heard some stories about, you know, in the COVID year that, you know, people went to private schools because they wanted a different, you know, response, and maybe they're, you know, just following through with a few years, but generally, do you have any sense?
Generally, we're seeing the bubble, the classes of 130 exit and K-classes enter closer to 80, and that's the biggest differential that I've seen in the numbers throughout the year, with the acknowledgement that we did have a large exit, a larger-than-typical exit to private school last year with about 10 to 15 kids between private and the tech. In terms of, there's a report on our website under School Committee Presentations that shows, I think, a 10-year look back on basically totaled heads attending private school in the two communities, and it's relatively stable in Manchester, with the increase actually being from Essex, is I believe what we saw last year. But that's going on memory. So the biggest push is the demographic shift, where the largest classes, where we were growing, and, you know, we had a 20% increase in enrollment, is now completely rolled out, but we're just not bringing in as many students.
Yeah.
So I can't answer specifically how many left, how many came back, right here off the top of my head for COVID.
Okay. I'm sure it's not.
The other point I wanted to bring up is, you know, we've had this struggle over the last several years with, you know, in Manchester with our fire department and just trying to rationalize the budget there and staffing, et cetera. And we've had a declining, you know, Call Firefighter Force, you know, that's going back several years. And, but we all feel like a private victory in seeing the little sign out by the 128 that's advertising for Call Firefighters, and they've actually gotten some response. And so I share that just because... And so I, I share that, just because Manchester does have high-quality education to offer, you know, the two communities. And I wonder if everybody with school-age kids in town is aware of that. You know, I wonder if there's a way that we can, you know, maybe market that.
Could you be a little more specific? I, I'm, you think that, do you think the schools should make, do more public outreach to, to show the quality of the school?
Yes. Not, not that you're not doing it, or not, you know, like, I feel like, you know, we've all in this room been aware of it, but I, I don't know if the people that are choosing to, you know, have their kids go to private school are, you know, have a different view of it.
Okay. Oh, then I'm going to...
Can I follow up with a...
Certainly, of course.
I, I do think, yes, we can be doing more, and that's, we got into trouble in this conversation last year, so I'm going to be very measured in my response. We can certainly do more to market to families who may be making, trying to make decisions. The exit to private school is a concern that needs to be addressed, but that is not driving the enrollment decline. If I can get anything through tonight, it, that is, we have, we can pull up that report in another session and go through it. We have been pretty solid-state on the 80, 20, up to 25% of students exiting to attend private school at the secondary level from the beginning of the district. What we haven't experienced, in our overall enrollment numbers, are back to beginning of the district. What we have to take into consideration is between about 2008, 2009, and 2015, we saw a 20% spike in resident move-ins, which drove our enrollment up and is now rolling out. And that's what's, where the shift is. And where those students moved into was Manchester, because Memorial School during that time period peaked to about 430 students at one point, and now it's down. Remember, and then we added teachers, we were up to 19 sections at one point. We're down to two sections per grade level, and one with three, 13 sections at this point. So two things have happened. There's been a Democrat, demographic shift in the available number of resident students to attend school, with a relatively stable access to private school happening with some spikes post-COVID. And on, in addition to that, our staffing has been reduced by 15 heads over that time commensurate with the decline in enrollment. So we have been shrinking, and actually, that enrollment decline and our ability to move heads by attrition has allowed us to manage those gaps. Up until last year, we're starting to bump up against program. So that's just probably more than you asked for, but I think it's really important. We're not having an enrollment problem because of private school. We have within our enrollment problem a private school concern that we need to address at the eighth to ninth grade shift.
So assigned by 128 is not the answer.
It can't hurt. It can't hurt. I think maintaining quality of program in some of the post-COVID recovery, in terms of organization of the high school and middle school is important.
Can I just speak, Alva Indaharo, from Essex, was...
I was on in 2008, when the banks crashed, and yes, the private schools in, from both towns, was an influx, because all of a sudden, they couldn't, you know, couldn't see paying the money to a private school, and they came back to the public school. And quickly after the recovery, they also brought, you know, I don't know all of them, but they brought them back to the private school. So it's a mentality that they feel that their student is getting what they feel is a better education at a private school for a litany of reasons. So I do think it fluctuates.
Let me just explain, Alva Indaharo was on the School Committee in 2008. I, you kind of alighted that.
Oh, sorry.
And, and, and so was I.
Yeah, so, and I, I mean, I was on the School Committee for 11 years, you know, before switching to the tech, and then now back to the Selectment, so.
And I'll just add that, also down, around that time, with the housing crash, in the market the way it was, it allowed young families like myself, for instance, to be able to, to move into a town like this at that lower price point.
Cory?
Yes, Cory Creighton, Manchester Finance Committee, and I think this is a really good idea that we're all getting together like this early in the year. Question, Pam and Avi, your key cost drivers are personnel, healthcare, and then also special education. And I'm just wondering if you would comment on special education, declining enrollment, how you, how that fits into what you folks do? Because I know there are not a lot of levers you can work with, and the question sort of there is, looking forward, how predictable is that, and how, and what's the surprise factor on that going from year to year?
Special education in particular?
Yeah, just broad dollar.
So we, we run between 15 and 18% of the population acquiring special education services, the overwhelming majority being moderate special ed services, which means they are, they have some additional supports, a learning plan and a liaison, but they take a full battery of classes. So there is no specialized instruction, there's no, there's no additional program cost for those students. Then we have a subsection of students who are considered more severe, or with a specifically identified disability that requires what we would call partial separation programs or, you know, specialized programming. And those are things like our Earl Program, which is our, our reading program. We have a program for students who are autism, autism spectrum, and then severe handicap program. Those are the programs that we report on being the cost avoidance programs, where we invest in teachers and paraprofessionals to service up to eight students, cohorts of up to eight in district, to prevent the need for an out-of-district placement. It doesn't work 100% of the time. Families have a right to advocate for their needs. The importance of having those programs is because we have established high-quality programs that we can use to show that we can provide the service in district. For a family to receive out-of-district financial support, the towns of Manchester and Essex, they have to show that we can't meet the needs of the student here. So that's where having the programs in district not only allows us to keep kids close to home, which is their, their right and our obligation, but also puts us on strong footing for people who may just prefer to access education elsewhere, even though we can provide it here. And when a student qualifies for not-of-district placement, typically it's a student that is a severe health risk, a significant social, emotional, or medical need that we can't service here, or a compounded set of disabilities which doesn't fit a particular cohort, and we have an obligation to provide a cohort for those students. So we average about 22 to 25 students seeking out-of-district placements, and that's where our most, our greatest expense comes in, with a significant number of those placements being 100,000 plus. One of the, in, in the era of declining enrollment, one of the direct adds to the budget that we did experience was a cohort of students that needed postgraduate services, meaning once you're identified with specialty, special needs, you have the right to obtain an education from your community through the age of 22. A student who is moderate will go through the program, graduate, go to college, but students with, who need life skills or transition services, we will either, we don't have enough students to create a program here, so we have had to add that direct cost to the budget over the past few years. We're tracking it. We're hopeful that we might be, we think there is some roll-off this year in terms of kids finishing out, which could help us achieve the gap. So in summary, about 18, 15 to 18% of our students will always require services regardless of the enrollment, total enrollment, so it, you know, will, will resize itself based on the total heads, and we try to do everything we can locally to maintain students in district because they belong here, and it's a cost saving for everyone.
I'm going to offer my own comments, because I do not fully agree with the majority of the Board of Selectmen, and I disagree with some of the approaches of the Finance Committee. My concern is that Essex's total valuation is a third of Manchester's, which means that the wealth in Essex is a third of Manchester's. The way that the formula works out, if you take a household of, of 500,000, a $500,000 house, the 500, that, that family pays 40% more toward the school budget than the same value, the family with the same value of house in Manchester. If we were, in fact, a single town, that wouldn't happen. In a single town, the tax applies equally to everyone. This district is set up, and deliberately so, to take both the student population and the ability to pay into consideration. But at the moment, the formula, in my opinion, is very hard on Essex. Sarah is completely right, Essex pays thousands of dollars less per pupil, but in a single town, everybody pays the same per pupil. And everybody pays, regardless of whether they have a student in the district or not. So I think that is a, is a fundamental problem. I think it's been a problem from the beginning, and I think it's something that we need to look at, and it, that requires looking at the, at the regional agreement. And I'm willing to take questions, if anybody, Kathy?
I actually just wanted to follow up, I'm sorry, Kathy's a lot on Manchester's Blackboard.
I want to follow up on John's comment.
Sure.
Regarding shared services, so a subject near and dear to my heart. When organizations look at shared services, whether they're municipal or not, they typically start in a few certain areas: finance, procurement, facilities, IT. Those are the big four, okay? Sounds like the towns, you know, we have some arrangements around IT, that's good. Facilities, I guess you could say the school fields might be an area where we're doing some sharing. I would suggest that the school district is also an opportunity to be a shared partner. I'm not close to the services that you use for finance, you know, all of those different overhead areas, and it's an opportunity for the school district itself to use as many shared services as possible. Regarding the line items in the budget, I think facilities is a really big line item, if I recall, in the school budget, and if we were one town, I'm not sure we'd have two equally-sized elementary schools. So I understand that's a, not a near-term discussion for this year, but I just wanted to throw it out there. There's many different options that we may want to take another look at to, given the, where the enrollment is, so, you know, you're kind of opening a door on a conversation around the apportionment formula. You know, I, I think everything should be on the table, because a structural problem with the budget is usually a symptom of a structural problem somewhere else, right? So I just think everything needs to be on the table. We've got to open the door to, be, be willing to take a look at assumptions that were made five, six, seven years ago, whatever.
Twenty, twenty-three.
Twenty, whatever, you know? As far as I'm concerned, any assumption pre-COVID, you, you got to take another look at. There's no strategy that was done pre-COVID, in my personal opinion, that shouldn't have a sanity check, so to speak. So just my two cents.
If I could, just, for the sake of history, having an elementary school in each town was one of the critical agreements that allowed the district to form. Maybe they feel differently now because we could save, but that's, that's a hard one.
I, I agree, and I'm not suggesting that one elementary is the right answer. In the town I used to live in, we had a K through two, you know, kindergarten through second grade in one area, so a possible solution, and I'm sure that was looked at before, you know, maybe we merge the students earlier. I'm just saying, given the seriousness of the structural issue, we had a great K through two school in the town I used to live in. People loved it, and, you know, the kids merged at a different time, and I'm just trying to align the analogy with the apportionment formula. If we were all one town, you know, the, the facility's layout might look a little...
On a different subject, I, I wonder whether, with the School Committee, looking at AP classes, one of the big hot buttons I heard last year was about AP classes. Have we looked at, is there other ways to do that? Meaning, can you collaborate with Gloucester on certain AP classes and other classes and try and figure out a way of not having an AP class that has very, you know, under 10 kids in it? I, I don't know, I mean, a good education is a good education, and I just feel that we have to not just look at what can the towns do, but what can the school also do?
I remember what I was going to say to Kathy. It's general information, the way that this, that the district agreement can be modified is for the School Committee to bring a proposal. We can't just say, okay, here's a, a room of, of 35 really smart, really dedicated people, let's tear it apart. We, the, any change to the agreement has to come from the School Committee, and that's part of the agreement. Yes, Ben?
First of all, I, I appreciate sort of providing a contrary view to your, your board. I do think one of the advantages of hiring a consultant could be to look at other regional districts, and I don't feel like I have a very good understanding of the variation that we see in formulas, apportionment formulas between towns. In other words, do we have the standard? Is our formula sort of standard, or has this been broached in different ways by different districts based on the circumstances, such as wealth disparity between towns? And I think that could be very helpful to this group, to look at some, some data and to find some analogs. So, I mean, it's not just about looking at the district, I think it's also about looking at the structure.
It, it was looked at, at the time that the, the regionalization agreement was, was arranged, but I'm sure that other districts have, have transformed, and yes, that, that sounds like a great idea.
Teresa, are you taking responses? May I?
Yes, of course.
Okay, all right. Just to respond to Alva, I, I, not to respond to your specific question about like the AP courses in particular, but just to reiterate that, I know, I'm, I have every single one of y'all's names written down here in a little box next to it, and I'm taking down all of these ideas, and we, some of these things we have already looked at, and, and are well-covered territory, and some of them are not, and that's our work to do going forward, is to say, okay, which of these ideas are viable and which ones are not, and help explain that to the community best. In the end, what I will say is, any change that involves changing the program is going to bring out a, a different group of people who feel very, very strongly about it. So if it's increasing fees, that's going to bring a different group out from if it's, if it's regionalizing and putting our, our AP courses online with North Shore Community College, when we just came out of remote learning, or what have you. So we have to be prepared for that, but yes, we, we can explore everything, and then once the exploration is done, we will move on to the next one and not keep revisiting the same thing. But that, I've written it down.
Jody?
Jody Harris, Finance Committee. One of the things that I want to remind people is that the budget last year for Essex, we funded using our excess capacity, and our taxpayers haven't experienced that tax increase yet. They won't see that on their tax bill until the third quarter, so they aren't going to feel that pinch, they're going to feel more than a two and a half percent pinch when they get to January and have that February 1st bill due. So we really need to be cognizant of, that's still coming. We, we haven't even experienced the magic of the phone calls coming into Town Hall when they get that tax bill. So, you know, I, I think we are, Essex is in the realm of Prop 2 and 1/2. We don't have a lot of opportunities. We don't have an opportunity such as Manchester had with cell signaling. We have very little zoning. We're working on a zoning project now, but we, we literally have three, three zoning overlays... We're working on a zoning project now, but we literally have three zoning overlay districts, and that's it. So we're looking at some commercial zones, but we aren't there yet. We face constraints with sewer connections. We have limited sewer connections because we use Gloucester as our sewer provider. We have a call fire department, and our calls are answered, in general, by about eight members of a 35-member call department.
All call.
All, all calls. Fire, ambulance.
No, I'm saying we have an all-call department. There are no full-time.
That's right. No full-time, that's right. Not a full-time, so a strictly call-fire department. And with a required retirement age of 65. So of the eight people that answer, 85% of the calls, six of them will be 65 in six years. The differential there is $1 million to add a full-time fire department. So everything that we face in Essex for growth, we also measure against what's going to trip that wire for a full-time fire department. Why don't we have more buildings, developments? We have more wetlands, limited zoning. We have had revenue opportunities with short-term rental tax, and we added local meals tax. We have, from the economic development perspective, have proposed an over 55 development on a town-owned piece of land, which would then provide an opportunity for some of our seniors to sell the homes they're sitting in because they can't afford to go somewhere else, and they want to stay in Essex or in on Cape Town, but they can't afford to. They may own their house outright, so, you know, the theory is if every house is selling, round numbers, every house is selling for $1 million. If we can build a community where we can sell them a $500,000 downside, you know, step-down housing, they would put $500,000 in the bank. We would have somebody move in, rehab that house, increase the valuation in that house, and increase, you know, our revenue by another $0.5 million home. So that's something that we've been looking at. But again, our opportunities are, you know, slim and none. And trust me, I was hoping cell signaling guys were going to send them away because I was going to shoehorn them in there somewhere. I don't know where that was going to be, but we were like, hey, an opportunity for us.
By the way, Jody chairs the Economic Development Committee.
I'm sorry.
So probably worth stating.
Haven't been timing, but I think you're getting close to two minutes.
That's okay. Just one other thing. So I was on the original Regional Study Committee, and I think the only people sitting around this table who probably were there at the beginning are Anne and I. I think you were on the Finance Committee at the time. So we do know that we're better together. We do know, we do know that we don't want to do this alone. I don't think either town wants to do it alone. I think we do know that we went into this eyes wide open, and this, you know, this is year '24, that we were going to need to build buildings in Manchester and Essex. We knew that. Essex knew that. Manchester knew that they needed a, wanted a deeper, you know, better program, depth and breadth of program. That's what they're looking for, and a partner to build new facilities. Because at that point, they were okay with trash barrels in the hall in every rainstorm, and Essex was okay with, we'd like to have a seat at the table for governance and a permanent home for their students. I grew up in Essex. I went to Gloucester High. We were tuitioned there. Then the next slug of kids went to Hamilton 1M. Then the next slug of kids came to Manchester. So this was, this was an opportunity, and I think it's still the same opportunity that we had 24 years ago. I just think that we have a problem to solve. It is something that we're going to need to look at from an operational standpoint. Other districts have done operational audits, or they're triggered in the regional agreement by operational audits. I can't say strongly enough that we just need to, we need to deal with the numbers and work through it carefully. And really good economic times, you know, sort of breeds complacency with your spending, and now we're not in those good economic times, and we have high interest rates and people not being able to move, and we have a great school district. We want to keep that great school district, but maybe there's some trimming of fat. I mean, I think last year was a good maybe example. I think, Avi, you said you committed $520,000 in reserves and only used $92,000. Is that what I heard at your meeting? So, you know, right off the bat, you know, there's $460,000 that can go toward the $960,000 gap. But I know we can do this. We need to continue to work collaboratively because we're doing double and triple duty in Essex on boards and committees, and Brendan does 42 jobs. We couldn't trim anymore unless we gave up, you know, Brendan, which I'm not willing to do.
Could come to that, who knows?
Thank you. Sarah?
I just wanted to mention a little bit regarding the valuations and what you were saying about that. I think if you look at the recent trend, the valuations in Essex are increasing more rapidly than in Manchester. So changing the formula more to valuations, you still have a problem with people with the taxes rising. And I grew up in Lincoln, Mass., and we had our own elementary schools, grade schools, and we had a regional high school. When we joined together, each town had about 3,600 residents. Lincoln was much wealthier than Sudbury. Now, 40, 50 years later, I don't know when, they've been regional forever. Sudbury has the same wealth factor as Lincoln, and they now have 18,000 residents, whereas Lincoln has about four or five. So things do change with time, and I don't think with equalized, with valuations, if a person can't sell and if they bought 10 years ago, a greater portion of the school budget on valuations is still going to mean more taxes to them. It's not going to save it.
You're absolutely right that Essex's valuations are going up slightly faster. Essex's total EQV is going up slightly faster than Manchester's. Still, this year, Manchester has 73% of the total valuation, and Essex has a little less than 27. So it's a big difference. And I will stop there.
What do you mean that Manchester pays a lot more because of the evaluation of their property than Essex?
Manchester, the equalized valuation is a quarter of the total of splitting things up. So the student population, which is much more volatile, is 75% of instructional. So that's why it's now done as a three-year average in hopes of not having these changes so quickly. Moving, I'm not going to talk about how we might change the formula, but I think we need to think about the ability of, the actual ability of the towns to pay. And I realize that any change is going to hurt somebody. Anyone? Pam?
I love that pre-K-2 idea, and I know Anne knows. I've been talking about that for years. One thing probably just to bring to everybody's attention, less unmodeling, more on what we consider some of our fixed costs or fixed constraints, is the organization of the district because the regional agreement promises certain things. So we have explored the pre-K-2. I think there's a lot of merit there educationally, aside from potential savings that could be had by combining facilities. We cannot do it independently. We would need a reorg of the regional agreement to allow us to do redistricting. We did present, like you said, it was pre-COVID, but we did present it as an option during the information gathering phase prior to the Memorial School project, and pre-K-2 got shot down pretty quickly, as did creating the one combined facility. All that being said, we do try to work, we honor the regional agreement, but then find any opportunity we can that is, or is silent, to create some regionalization. So that's why we have the pre-K here in Manchester, not because we've chosen Manchester over Essex, but because by the numbers, 60% plus of the students were here, would not need to be transported, so we've put it here. Same with our special education programs. The regionalization agreement is silent. It actually allows for us to do some grouping on special ed. So that's why you see small cluster programs strategically placed either at Essex Memorial or here at the Middle High School. So we are on board with that. The facility, Middle High School, the way it's situated and where it's situated creates its own financial obligation. So there are some things we can fix, some you can't because we built the buildings that we did, others you might be able to address through the agreement.
Brendan?
Just a couple of things we didn't mention. We talked about the fire department, the police department, and this is true of all small towns. With police reform, we were heavily reliant on part-time police officers prior to police reform coming in. That pool has all but dried up. So what are we doing? We're bringing in officers on overtime. We do not, we, if we hired enough full-time officers to really fill out the shift, that would be even more expensive. So we're still trying to do what we can with that, but that was a big, that didn't help us at all because we had a nice little thing going there with the police department. With respect to revenue, we were hopeful that we were going to realize at least $300,000 a year from the marijuana dispensary that is now in Essex. If we see $3, I'll be, I'll be, you know, amazed. So that was, that was an attempt to look at revenue. It's not going to happen. And with respect to short-term rentals, the town meeting included a 2% increase in hotel-motel short-term rental. At the last town meeting, we went for the 3% impact fee for short-term rentals over and above hotel-motel. It didn't pass, but the selectmen are trying it again. So we really are turning over all the stones. We're really trying to hit all the revenue sources, and we're really trying to reduce all of the expenses to the extent we can. Thank you.
Mike?
Mike Brad, Manchester Finance Committee. Just a couple of quick things. So number one, I'm a huge proponent of cell signaling and looking forward to that, but I think we need to state that's three to four years out, right? That's like a world away, at least how I view things, right? And until we get there, you know, we, we, the Finance Committee wake up and have the exact same challenges the Essex Finance Committee does, right? We're trying to make everything fit in a 2.5%, right, raise every year. And I believe the numbers I heard was that, you know, look, it's a big percentage of the town budget for both of us. I think it's even bigger for us, percentage-wise. So it's actually harder for us to fit, you know, to look at EPW, police, fire, and still make everything fit in that 2.5%, you know, raise. So I get that Essex is a small town. We're a small town too, right? So I take your point. Some of your departments might have one person, we might have 1.2. Like, you know, it's not, we're not comparing, you know, a Lincoln suburb. That's, you know, I think there's 2,500 people in Lincoln and 18,000 in Sudbury, right? That's like this. We're like this. We're both small towns, so we both have a lot of these same challenges. So I just, just trying to state it so that, you know, it doesn't come across that, I don't know, our task is like that much easier than your guys fit in that 2.5% raise every year.
It's interesting because the areas that were brought up, facilities, procurement, and IT, those are all handled by me. In Manchester, I think you might have separate functions for that. With respect to finance, the fourth area that was mentioned, we have one town accountant, one treasurer-collector, a volunteer finance committee, a stipended assessor, board of assessors, very small amount of money, and me. I think if you looked around, you would see more hats on heads of people that work in Essex than in Manchester. I really think the difference is that big.
I guess, Craig, maybe you can comment on that a minute. I feel like we run pretty lean, maybe not as lean, but pretty lean.
Yeah, I think both towns operate on a very short string. But yeah, we have a few more heads, certainly. Proportional, it's probably pretty equal in terms of populations and number of heads. But, you know, Brendan's comment about police, if you're going to put two cops on the road, whether you have 3,500 people in town or 5,500, it's pretty comparable. So on a per capita basis, you know, Essex is going to be spending more. So, and again, those opportunities certainly should be pursued, but they're not going to solve the problem. The gap is bigger than a couple hundred thousand worth of savings realized in some shared services.
With the exception of the city.
No question.
We've spoken about the facilities merger before, and we're happy to revisit it again. It did not get traction last time it was brought to all of the boards. I mean, just, I mean, I think you all know, all of our custodial won't change. That's square footage determined, and it's all contract service as it is. We have one facilities manager, one maintenance person, and one, we have one on-staff custodian that oversees all of the contract workers for night shift.
Yeah, just to clarify where I was going with that. When facilities are consolidated, it's not just the maintenance people that wind up saving, right? It's, it can be other overhead positions, et cetera. So there's like this domino effect. Actually, I spent a lot of time doing this in my past life, so it's not just those particular heads. And the other areas that I mentioned, the way you start by saving with the shared services is initially by reducing headcount, but you get to a point where you can't reduce headcount anymore. But that's where the automation comes into play. So those reports that somebody was asking for, you know, you should be able to push a button and get that stuff done. So for stuff like that, where the towns already have some skin in the game with, you know, for example, an IT supplier, right? You know, if there are some economies of scale that we can leverage there so you don't have people doing manual back-office work, that is where, you know, people outside of this industry, you know, save their money. And like I said, the facilities in particular has a huge domino effect. Don't, you know, underestimate it.
Nina?
Thank you. Nina McKinnon, Essex Finance Committee. I think I want to just bring up the broader picture. I heard how the school committee was saying that they're hearing people don't want fewer options, people don't want fewer teachers. I think that's how we can phrase it. If we flip it around, I'm hearing people say they want efficiencies. They want a Manchester resident said to me, why did my daughter be recognized as an honorary biology student in sophomore year, but she couldn't get into AP Bio as a junior? Or why is a senior who's been in all art classes unable to take an AP art class, and now they're having to do a workaround? And so it's, that is where I think there's the concerns or the frustrations. It's not as simple as to say we don't want fewer teachers. I think what I'm hearing from people, and people are scared to talk now, like people are scared to get up. You can almost tell I'm nervous to talk because if you go against the sort of argument or go against it, it becomes very nerve-wracking, what would be posted on Facebook, et cetera. It's trying to understand what is being offered. We're not given any alternatives. In the budget workshops that were done between May, those two that were done between the May and June, was the first time that we were actually hearing, well, if we do this, there might not be the director of like art or whatever it was, the music and art. If we do this, or we do that. I think if the community could be behind things jointly, if we could understand the options, understand the data, and the data just never seems to, it never seems to report out, it never seems to be the same report each time. Our enrollment, this is based off last year, since everything's obviously not beneficial, is at the approximate... is at the approximate size of 2012, but we have 20 more headcount than we do from 2012. We've heard we've lost 16 teachers, or not teachers, but 16 staff. But if I look at the report from, that was given out in one of the public meetings, general ed is down 8.4, special ed is up, instructional teachers are up, enrollment's down 11.9, yet we're told we've, I've lost 16. But yet last week's meeting, we hired 16. So I think that's where the hard, the hard message or the, it's not inconsistent, it's just where the message gets mixed up. And so then whether it is going for an override. If we want to support an override, people would be behind it. Explain why there isn't a librarian. You know, it's little things explain how things are prioritized, and we don't have that. So for the people whose taxes are going crazy, right now, it's numbers of people saying, "I have two years left and then I'm out of here. I'm one year left, I'm out of here." And it's those jointly, the type of communities we want. And I think that's where, it's not about wanting fewer teachers, fewer options. I think it's really about where can we find efficiencies? Where can we understand what's being offered? My daughter is in a class with four students. I have spoken to seven dual district schools in the last three days. None of them offer classes with less than seven, eight students, not talking about special ed. So it's those type of efficiencies that I think is what we have to be asking for. Thank you.
Go ahead.
I have a question about school choice reserve balance. It was always my understanding when I was on the school committee and beyond, that when we took school choice students, it was to fill a seat and get $5,000 to offset the budget and keep classes filled.
Okay, that, I'm sure Pam or Abby can address.
Yeah, obviously we didn't do a good job with addressing that last year. So prior to our getting here, school choice reserve account was built up. There was a, do you know the years, there was a change in the accounting where now school choice is a direct stream into the budget as an offset, as you've said, and we haven't really grown that school choice account very much.
It's been very stable for the past, I'd say, five or six years.
It's kind of a legacy reserve, which is now gone with the field.
Yep. Basically, as the money comes in, we track whatever we expect to get to the operating budget as a direct offset. There is a legacy balance that we have been essentially using as our rainy day fund. Right now, it's being used, being used to pay for the turf field project until such time that we do have an agreement on how we move forward there. And it gets combined with our E and D fund to help provide that.
So when do you reimburse from the towns for the fields? It'll go directly into the school choice reserve account? It'll go back in there?
There'll have to be a discussion about whether it goes to stabilization or school choice.
Yeah, so, yep, that's exactly right. I think, I think where we've been, it's really up to the school committee to decide how they do that. In recent years, the fund that we've been using for reserves primarily has been stabilization. It was funded by interest income on the bonds for the memorial school project, roughly a million dollars. That's been spent down primarily on equity investments at Essex Elementary, the playground, the technology, all the things that we wanted to do to make the program equal as much as possible to Memorial School. That's where most of that money has gone. The last portion has gone towards the turf field and now we're into the school choice fund. So I think as those, you know, as that $1.2 million current anticipated district investment in turf, if it does get reimbursed, which would be terrific, I think the question would be, what would, what would happen with it? We have a four-year capital plan that we've talked about. I think going back to the question of facilities, I think right now, one of the things we definitely want to do, if we think about, nobody wants to harm our educational product, and that's really understood and that message is very clear. We also, I think, have a fiduciary responsibility to make sure that we are not deferring investments on the 50 and 40 million, $49 million projects that taxpayers generously supported. And so what we've tried to avoid doing, which a lot of other districts that are in cut mode do, is put all your money into people and benefits and cut everything else. So those are the types of strategic decisions when you say, what kind of district do we want to be? I would say maybe five or six years ago on our district improvement plan, one of the things was to bring up our facility maintenance to the condition of our educational program. That's the decision, that's a choice. We don't need to make that choice. I love automation. If we can do more of that, that's a great way to go, where you gain through efficiencies rather than lose through efficiencies. So I just think we need to think about how we're going to make choices with the limited funds that we have. If we can get that reimbursement, that would be terrific. We do have quite a big liability in facility maintenance, primarily in Essex Elementary at this point. We had the study that was done. That's one example of an outside audit where we had people come in to help us assess at what point will we need to start putting money into this building, when it reaches the tax life? We're not there yet, but we want to make sure we're not putting our heads in the sand and ignoring that and having that bill come due, and people say, "Why didn't you plan ahead?" So we're trying to do that. We clearly know Essex Elementary is the near term. If we can get MSBA to help us, that would certainly cut the bill for taxpayers. We'd love to do that. Some communities, some communities have not wanted to do that. But I, people are talking also tonight about making sure that if we are going to invest in facilities, that we have the operational budget and educational program stabilized. Otherwise, it doesn't make a lot of sense to have a great building with not the right thing inside. So we have a lot of things to worry about, and these reserve questions that you're bringing up really come back to how will we strategize? So that will come back to the school committee. Once, if we do hear from Essex, that would be amazing. And then I think the next question will be, how do we continue this multi-year planning process that we've done? We've done multi-year planning for operations since before the first 2016 override. I think it's been informing these conversations. We've been doing it on the capital side. Our goal is to provide the information and then let the communities decide where they want those dollars to go and how they want them to go. So I really appreciate you bringing that up, and I'm really excited to see if we can partner in that way to maybe give us some opportunity to handle some of our pressing liabilities.
I have a question and a comment. So Pam, my question is for you. Abby, you mentioned that nobody here wants to hurt the educational product, which I sincerely agree with. My question for you or Pam, would the educational product be harmed in any way? And this is not speaking to special education, but if you took the, the student to teach a ratio from one or two kids in the class to 10, does that hurt the product, the educational product, if you have 10 children in the class?
It's, it's not as simple as that, just in terms of juggling a class schedule, right? If there's a class that has two students in it, it's because those two students can only attend that class during that period. Where are we going to get eight extra students? If you look at class size data across the state, Desi released a report about it, the districts that have the smallest classes are the districts that have the lowest enrollment. It is extremely difficult to juggle class size when you only have so many students to work with. So for example, if we have 36, 36 is not a good number, and I'm trying to do math in my head, Ruth, you've put me on the spot. If we have 50, right, if we have 50 4th graders, we are looking at either two classes of 25, I'm going to go up, say 56. We are looking at two classes of 28, which I think would be unacceptable.
Would be a problem.
For many stakeholders in this town. Or we'd be looking at three classes of somebody with a calculator closer to 18, I think, something like that. And then somebody's going to say, "Well, that's well below the state average. Why are we holding classes?" Because we have, what is the other option? Well, I can tell you, the other option would be to fill the extra seats in that classroom of 18 with school choice students, but then we hear about that too. It's not, it's not because it's detrimental to have 10 students in a class versus two students in a class. It's because we don't have the flexibility, because we don't have the depth in our student body to do it.
Yeah, I would say quality measure is one thing. Breath, access, and opportunity are another. And some may equate the two, some may think you can have one without the other, others may not. So, you know, I, I don't want to get into individual situations, and I think that's the tricky part of when you're talking about some of these anecdotes that we pick up, which is, if there's a class of four, my question is, why is it four? Of course, that's not optimal, that's not what we're striving for, that's not efficient. Assuming that there's logic, there's most probably a logical reason and a conflict that's created, and as Kate said, we would, we would dig and probe. Why a student can't get one thing or the other is typically what we're trying to avoid with some of the smaller class sizes, which is there's usually some type of other obstacle or forced choice that's not acceptable to the student and the family. Understandable. We're not going to solve all of those problems, and a discussion of sectioning numbers and enrollment at this level can't get into, you know, what one student got or didn't get and why a teacher may have made a wreck. Because there's like a lot, there's the underlying conversation and there's the structural conversation. So the structural problem we're having is that because a, a high school student, because this is the focus conversation at the high school, it's much cleaner K8. A student takes seven courses, so that's 1.4 teachers for roughly 15 to 20 students. Even if you cut one of those sections, you don't have a clean staffing cut, you have a partial staffing cut. So you're either going to reduce someone by .8, which isn't desirable and you lose the person, so then you're really reducing 1.0 and creating problems someplace else. So I think it is more complex than people want it to be. But all of the drive and all of the investment, it, it's not a working conditions issue, it's a student access to coursework issue. And that is where I think it's a, will likely become a policy decision for the school committee to determine if you would like the minimum. And then we can work within that. We can work with minimums, that's not a problem. Executing it is not a problem.
So last year during the school budget conversations, Selectman Fivin had mentioned at the board of selectmen meeting that his son went to St. John's Prep and that they had class size guidelines and that the families, that it was a policy that if a class size fell below 10 students, it was understood that that class would be cut. And that the families actually had to sign that policy. So he, he gave an example, which is, you know, if my son was a freshman and took, we'll use French, he took French, and then his sophomore year, that particular class's next French two or whatever, only had eight students, they understood that that would be cut because it was under that class size guideline. So since tonight's conversation is all around problem solving and solution finding, I'm throwing it out there that maybe we need to have some class size guidelines to limit how many small class size options we have, if it doesn't hurt the educational product that you're providing.
I think the other piece to remember is that, as Pam said, when we're cutting one section of a class, we're cutting a tiny section of one teacher's workload. And we can't retain teachers if they're not full-time employees. They will go to a district where they can get a full-time job. They don't want a .6, they don't want a .8. Some do, and that's great, but people want a full-time job. And if they want a full-time job and we're not offering one, they're going to go get one in a different district because there's a teacher shortage right now. They can, they can choose.
So all of those teachers, Kate, that are full-time, are they, do they have a full-time course load? So they're teaching, how many classes are in a day? I don't know. Eight classes in a day?
It's a seven, yeah. It's five classes, they teach five a day.
And how many classes are in a full day?
It's a seven-day. It's a seven-period.
Seven periods.
Multi-day rotation and draw.
But in any one day, there's, there's six periods.
A full-time teaching load is five teaching periods.
And one.
Six teach, six student periods.
Yeah.
In a power block. Lost.
Yes. Um, I'm sorry, Eric.
Eric Spencer, School Committee. I just, Ruth, your question is a fair one, and the St. John's Prep example I heard as well, but I think a key differentiator there is the size of the prep. And when you're looking at a high school of 1,200 versus our high school of 450, your options for how you structure or schedule are much greater. And Kate was speaking to this point, but I think the example, Nina, that you brought up, we don't strive to have a class of four kids, but also when we talk about excellence in our school district, we don't strive to have a kid who's taken French all the way through be unable as a junior or a senior to continue to study French, because that's not the school district we want to try to provide to our students. I really don't think it is. I do think we should think creatively about how to structure things, but I don't think we can expect to have the same policies that the prep might have with that many more options to structure courses, because we just don't have the same opportunities.
Chris?
Yeah, Chris Reed, School Committee. I would also just like to thank everyone for their time tonight and getting together. And I just wanted to maybe change the perspective a little bit. I would like to make sure that everyone on both boards, and I hope that you know this, the school committee fully realizes the work that you do, how efficient your towns are. When we talk about what the school district needs, we don't talk about it in a way or ever think, or it never comes up or assumes that the towns aren't doing their best in being as efficient as possible. Just like we are also doing our best in being as efficient as possible, I think what does, the perception that does start to come up is that the school district has been making significant cuts for about five years now. And we're sort of at the end of our rope, like, you know, towns have also said, we've been, you know, we have multiple people doing multiple roles, where we've been, you know, trying to gain efficiencies here. So those topics and trying to maybe pinpoint one or find one specific area is great, but it doesn't solve the larger challenge we have. There are some creative ways, you know, that I've thought of and I've done a little bit of research on. You know, there are some cities where, or towns, where people can opt out of overrides. You know, is that something creative that we've looked at? You know, there are programs where you can, you know, apply for abatements if you're in a particular situation with your taxes, right? There's a lot of creative ways that we can address some of the major concerns that it seems like our populations need. I mean, when I first moved to Manchester a decade ago, I was here for a year and my taxes went up 30% that year. I fully expected that, you know? When I bought my home, I saw what it was assessed at, I know what I bought it at. I fully expected my taxes to go up, you know, 30% was a big hit, but, you know, I had to pay it, you know, because of why I wanted to live here. And the main reason why we, we moved from where we lived in Melrose was because of the school district. And I know that point is a make point of it as well. The last point I just wanted to kind of make, I feel like this is sort of a fact, right? But we talk about two and a half percent and what that means. The way that I look at it, if my taxes only go up by two and a half percent this year, my taxes have actually gone down in real dollars, right? When interest rates are at 5%, and my taxes only go up 2.5%, I'm saving money this year in real dollars, right? You can, it's lots of different ways to understand that. When we're asking all of our town employees and school district employees to only, you know, limit their earnings, you know, to 2% per year, they're actually taking a pay cut every year. So I know we talked a lot about, we've talked a lot tonight about our constituents and how much we pay in taxes, but at some point, something has to give. And I, I think what I've seen so far in my two years of being involved here is that we have gotten to the point where the efficiencies have been found. I'm not sure I see much, much else that can be done besides talking about how, you know, the, the fine decision that we need to make, the final decision of, you know, what do we want the school district to be? But that's really, in my opinion, the only decision that's left to make. So, thank you.
Thank you. Pam?
I think this meeting has done a really good job illustrating the structural divides that exist in terms of the financial, from a financial perspective for each of the towns. And there's a little bit of a zero-sum game here, which is tricky. I mean, one town is in favor of reviewing the regional agreement, the other town, and I'm summarizing here, is not. And I think that what would be helpful for the next time we meet, and I do think we need to meet, is to come, to come with some options or ideas specifically that people can react to. Because I think, I see this as a context-setting meeting, and I think it's great. Like, I came, I, I felt like if we come away from this meeting kind of understanding where everyone stands, then that's super helpful. And I think that I, I would really like to pursue this, looking at other regional agreements and what structures are out there, and maybe come up with three ideas or considerations. And we can talk about process, like whether, you know, we kind of vet them before having the meeting and then we have a discussion as a group, or however we want to do it. But I just think that that would actually be really helpful. And I'll And I'll just, yeah, I'll just leave it at that.
There's a significant problem this year. I don't see any way that starting a process of looking at the regional agreement now will solve any of our issues this year.
I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm saying that, like, I'm talking about, that's a long run. That's a long-run endeavor. And I think making short-term decisions, thinking about the budget for this year, which is why it's great we're talking in September, as we get into budget season, I think part of what will influence thinking about the short-term budget is understanding if and how there may be a long-term plan.
Thank you. Okay.
I have some questions, they're not to be answered tonight. But these are, in my mind, the answers to these questions are what I need to do my job at this table or that table more efficiently. I think it would be helpful to know what our common understanding of the division of labor is when it comes to making decisions about the school budget and operating budgets of each town. So should town partners be involved in making recommendations or requests related to staffing, program offerings, facilities, and class size? Conversely, to what extent should district leadership expect to be involved in making recommendations or requests related to town finances, the housing crisis, police and fire department operations, and town revenue? The next question is, when can we expect commitment from each town about its ability to fund a school budget at a specific rate of growth? Or in other words, on an annual basis, by what date can we count on having definitive input from both towns about how much growth they are able to support? And finally, if a member town is unable or unwilling to support the level of educational program that the majority of our stakeholders expect, what is the shared understanding of our priority as a district? And then specifically for Essex, I hear the financial struggles. It's not that I don't understand them, and it's not that I don't feel them personally in my own home. My role as a school committee member is to approve a district budget that's financially prudent and educationally sound. I think that the financial commitment to do that in this district averages 3.5% growth. We can find efficiencies, we have done that every single year. But we cannot find enough efficiencies to bridge the deficit without significant program cuts. So if that is the ask, that's what we will do. But I'm not hearing that that is the ask. And so I really don't know what we are charged with doing at this point. We will continue to find every efficiency possible without substantially cutting our program. But we can't solve a bigger financial problem because I'm hearing from everybody on this side of the table that the problem is not just the school budget, the problem is the police budget. The problem is that someday we're going to need a full-time fire department. The problem is that we have an untenable housing situation for seniors, and the hits are going to keep coming. So we need real financial solutions that can help carry our entire town forward, not just our school budget. I think the one really strong personal position that I feel the need to state out loud, and I'm sorry that this even needs to be said, town leaders are responsible for the narrative that they sell about the school budget. So to that end, decisions like class sizes are an administrative decision made by school leaders with an eye towards academic program and financial efficiency. The public debate that forces district leadership to justify and explain and prove every detail, and the ongoing criticism about transparency is not harmful because there is anything to hide. It is harmful because it breeds distrust between our town and our district. And it's harmful because it takes away our most important resource, which is administrative time and administrative energy, and it diverts it to answering these small questions in the big scheme of things. Because those issues are not going to be how we solve this huge budget issue. We're not going to solve it by cutting AP French. We're not going to solve it by cutting two teachers. So I've sat at this table for two years, I've been critical, I have asked questions, and I have no reason not to trust our district leadership. I don't know where this distrust has come from, and I don't know why it has become so acceptable for it to be on a public stage. But we need to move forward productively. And in order to do that, we need to be on the same page about what everybody's roles and responsibilities are. I don't feel like I can do my job if we don't have defined roles and responsibilities.
It is now 20 minutes after the end of the meeting. Jodi, you have spoken several times. If you would like to adjourn the Manchester Finance Committee, please feel free. Thank you. Any of you are welcome to stay if you'd like.
My point was that Mass General Law, Chapter 71, Section 60, Subsection K actually gives member towns the right to ask the district school committee for information that they deem fit through the board of selectmen. So it is part of our regional agreement, it is part of Mass General Law. It is, it does.
I'm not saying that it's illegal, Jodi. I'm just saying that we need some, we need a shared goal.
Transparency, and I think everybody wants to, you make decisions by numbers, you do it in your own household, you do it in your town budgets, you do it in your school budgets. So when, when people are asking for information, it is to make, to help make good decisions so that things can be sold, or not sold, or approved or not approved within your town. That's how you make good decisions. I see Abi over there, you know, nodding. Yet that's how all finance people make decisions, is based on data. So I, I think that the more transparency.
Becky Jakes, Manchester Select Board. I just want to say that we all came here in the spirit of collaboration. I don't, I don't think we should lose that. I would like to say that, that, yes, there is a problem with, with people throwing around transparency or the lack thereof. And I think that's really unfortunate and incredibly divisive. And, and we have that problem in town as well. But I also think we need to understand what each of our lanes is, are, and what you all, your jobs are. We shouldn't tell you how to do what you do. We can ask questions, but we can ask them in a respectful manner, in a way that doesn't imply mistrust. And I think that, that it's important for all of us to, to remember that, that we are working together. And it's a lot more effective when we ask in a nice way.
Thank you. It is, as I said, very nearly 9:30. I think we've covered a lot of ground and made our positions. We have, we have spoken, and we have heard, I think. And I think it's time to go home. So I would like a motion to-
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?